Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this meeting to order. Today is a regular meeting of the Commissioner's Court of Hood County, Texas. It is Tuesday, September the 10th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walson Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. And today we are pleased to have with us Father Stuart Smith to give us the invocation. Welcome, Father.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for every good and perfect gift that you shower down upon us, the life that you've given us, this free nation-state and county that we live in, for the blessings of liberty and constitutional government, for a government that is by the people and for the people. We thank you for this Commissioner's Court. Pray that you would pour into the hearts of each member the spirit of wisdom as they conduct business for the sake of many. We pray for the gift of civility and tongue and of expecting and counting on the best from one another. We ask your blessings upon the way decisions are made for money and property and all the things that go into good government. Keep us in your peace and help us to be instruments of your peace. We ask for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay. Thank you. We've got a couple of special presentations today. Where are the?
They're coming.
Oh, they're coming? You got them there? Okay. The first one is a proclamation declaring September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, Constitution Week. And who do we have prepared? Oh, gosh. Boy, we're in for a treat now. Looky here, these ladies. We're gonna go down there. Y'all wanna join me down here? (Inaudible) You want to read this, Margaret? You don't have your glasses? Well, I'll read it for you then, okay? These ladies do so much here for the, for everything. I mean, Friends of Memorial Lane, you always down there and everything else. They just do a lot. But this is official proclamation to designate September 27th through 29th, 2024, as, oh, I picked up the wrong one.
(Laughter)
I have father's school next week. I don't want to go another week.
As Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 2037th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition of the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will celebrate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Ron Massengill, Judge of Hood County, along with all members of the Hood County Commissioner's Court, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, this guardian of our liberties, reminding that lost rights may never be regained. And witness thereof this 10th day of September, 2024, signed by all of the Commissioners' Courts, myself. There they go. Well, thank you for all you did. Thank you, baby.
(Applause) We ring bells at exactly 4:00, which was when the Declaration, I mean, the Constitution was signed. And we do it, we're doing it at the Langdon Center at Gordon House this year. Come, a tea at 2:00, story time with the kids, and then about 3:00, we'll start a program and ring bells exactly at 4:00.
That's very nice.
So, I hope y'all can come.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you. Would y'all do such a great deal. You gonna get the real pretty one here with all the, the flick of that. Took along with all the, look at this stuff.
(Inaudible)
Well, thank you.
(Inaudible)
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We got the other one. We got that one. Yeah. This last one here is to designate September 27th through 29th as Camp Fire, Camp El Casaro. Do we have anybody here for that? Good. Come on up. You know, we've been doing this for a long time, haven't we?
Yeah, about 90 years.
Oh, yeah, 90 years. Right. You remember when we were doing that?
I was there.
You were? You were one of the campfires. Yeah, right. You were doing that for a good deal. What is your name? You're Bruce Miller.
Brian Miller.
Brian Miller. President, CEO. Brian, yes, what's your name?
Brian Rivera.
Oh, good. Nice to meet you. I'm gonna let you read this.
I'm gonna ask Ryan to read. They have the same.
Oh, you have the same.
(Inaudible) Whereas Camp Fire, Camp El Casaro has been part of Hood County since its establishment in 1934, providing a nurturing and educational environment for generations of young people to complement nature and develop a simple life spirit. And whereas remaining units, Camp El Casaro has offered sanctuary for children and teens from diverse backgrounds, engaged in meaningful outdoor activities, building inferior friendships, and discovered their true potential away from the distractions of modern technology. And whereas Camp El Casaro's commitment to fostering the spirit of adventure, independence, and respect for nature makes it a treasure institution within our community. And whereas this notable nonprofit organization has enriched the lives of generations of campers through its commitment to comprehensive outdoor education, fostering softer lives, building teamwork, and environmental stewardship through overnight camp programs, day camp programs, and outdoor education programs for schools. And whereas the 90th anniversary of Camp El Casaro marks a significant milestone in the history of celebrating the decades of contribution to youth development and outdoor education.
Now, therefore, the Hood County Commissioners' Court hereby proclaim September 27th through 29th, 2024, as Camp Fire, El Casaro, 90th anniversary, celebrated two days in Hood County. And there is all residents who recognize and participate in celebrating this venerable institution, which has made significant contributions in shaping the lives of young people and enhancing our community. Signed, 10th day of September, 2024, all members of the Hood County Commissioners' Court. Congratulations to y'all. 90 years. (Applause) She just loves you all, dog, for a second. She said, really, y'all do a fabulous job. So, good. Congratulations. Thank you. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work. All right. Good.
Come down. We got a couple guys coming up to take care of it.
Okay. No service awards, right? So, now we're going on to the citizens' comments at large, and we have three speakers signed up. And the first speaker is Gary Roberts. Is that?
Gary, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna start out. You guys don't know, I work at the Sheriff's Office. I'm a little bit of a grown-up here. I thought I'd teach you guys about some issues you could have at the Sheriff's Office. (Inaudible)
Work now? Feel better? Again, I work at the Sheriff's Office, and I've talked each of you guys individually, but I want to take a few more minutes to talk about some of the issues the Sheriff's Office faces. I know you guys are gonna work on the budget here the next few days and weeks and try to get that ironed out. But I want to talk about some of the things that we began three years ago when I talked to y'all for a couple hours in here about our problems. We said three years ago, we're gonna start working on it. We started on it. We got our starting pay up. We got some things fixed, and then we kind of just let it die out. We haven't done anything else that we said we were gonna do. That's a problem for us. So, I'm gonna just give you some numbers real quick in reference to our pay scale. You know, our police officers, they start at, our deputies start at $61,000, they cap out at $69,000. Granbury PD, they start at $70,000, and they cap out at $105,000. Weatherford, $65,000 and $95,000. Sergeants at our agency, they go between $72,000 and $82,000. They can't make more than $82,000. Starting pay at Granbury PD for a sergeant is $89,000, and it goes up to $134,000. Weatherford's $91,000 and $116,000. Lieutenants, $82,000 to $87,000. I'll use myself as an example. I'm going into my third step. It's our final step. I can't make any more money than that here. $87,000. Granbury PD, they start at $104,000, and they go to $156,000. Same step program that we have. So, the guy that does my job at GPD makes $156,000. $70,000 more than I make. And I'm not in here fighting for my money. I'm fighting for my guys' money. But it ain't right. Weatherford PD, they start at $105,000, they're lieutenants, and they cap out at $135,000. We're not even in the ballpark, guys. $70,000 pay difference for doing the same job down the street. And GPD, they cover $12,000 residents. We cover over $60,000, depending on what stat you want to look at. We're not even close. We just stopped three years ago. We got, we got our, we got our starting pay up, and then we quit. I don't know what happened. I keep hearing about this. So, across the board, it's about $30,000 pay difference. But I'm gonna talk fast because I don't have much time. But I keep hearing about this comp time, and I don't know what you guys are basing that on, that we have too much comp time. I don't know if you went to other agencies and looked at their comp time and said, hey, we're too much. But I doubt you did. I did. I went to Weatherford, first place I went. Today, Weatherford has 63 sworn people to get comp time. We have 61, so we're pretty comparable. Difference is, we have twice the population that we cover than Weatherford does. Their comp time on the books today, 4,688 hours for their 63 employees that get it. Weatherford mitigates their comp time two ways. They pay overtime, and they, every October, they pay their, their comp time down to 80 hours for all their employees. So, they mitigate it two ways. We don't have either one of those things. We can't mitigate our comp time that way. All we do is have people take off. We have on our books for our 61 employees, 4,508 hours of comp time. 180 hours less than the agency down the road with half the population, and they pay overtime, and they pay off their comp time every year. So, stop telling the sheriff back there that's going into his fifth term, that he doesn't know how to manage his agency. He does. We're doing better than everywhere around us. So, I don't know what metric you are using to measure against. I have a feeling it's just a tax rate and the budget cuts you want to do. But it's not about public safety. Stop using our deputies as a credit card that you only have to pay off when they get burnt out and leave, because that's what's happening. I asked you for a fraud investigator and I asked you for another drug investigator to help me, because I'm tired of sitting in the living room of these parents who just lost their young one to a drug overdose, but y'all say you can't afford it. But I think it's just that you don't care. Same thing with our elderly community, our senior community. We're losing millions of dollars in fraud. I asked you for a fraud investigator, you tell me you just don't have the money. I think it's just that you just don't care. Just recently, last month or in June, we had an officer-involved shooting. We almost lost three of our deputies. They were unloaded on a, by a guy with a pistol from closer than me to the judge. How they made it home that day, I don't know. But I do know what ended the fight that day was the rifles of the sheriff that y'all keep saying doesn't know what he's doing, putting patrol cars just two months prior. We had cars that worked that day. That's not always the case. Sometimes they break down. But we had cars that worked that day, and the sheriff had to put rifles in the cars. We were able to get there, and we entered the gunfight, and we saved our three deputies and the community. I never thought I'd see it in Hood County, but I think what a few of you guys are doing, it's called defunding the police. I'm tired of it. You guys, we can't operate like this. We all are defunding the police. That's exactly what you're doing. We cannot be safe and operate in what y'all are doing. I never thought I'd see it from this group of people sitting up there, but that is exactly the message you're sending to our people. I told them to come back three years ago, and seven out of eight did. And I have nothing to tell them now. Y'all gambled last time you lost. You're gonna gamble again and lose again. Thank you.
Good night. It's Cheryl Shaden.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Shaden. I want to thank all of the elected officials and the community for coming to the TCEQ public hearing last night regarding air pollution at Wolf Hollow Power Plant. Wolf Hollow Power Plant, Constellation Energy, wants to put in a third gas power plant. This is going to be eight more turbines. This is a 500% increase from Wolf Hollow 1. And the significant increase in air pollution, per TCEQ, we have until tomorrow to file for a contested hearing, meaning judicial, against this. This means significant air pollution for Hood County and all of our surrounding counties. We need the community and all of our elected officials to get online at TCEQ and file for a contested hearing. This is going to impact all of our lives. The celebration capital of Texas is now going to be the air pollution capital of Texas. We need to stand up and do something, all of us, the entire community, because it's going to affect us all. Thank you.
Next is Tina Brown.
I just want to talk about the agenda. There are four items on here about the budget and the tax rate and so forth, but there were no hyperlinks to check into this. How, I mean, the only thing I have is what's on the, on the webpage. So, I don't know where you're at. So, how can, I don't know where you're at. Nobody knows where you're at. How can we have legitimate questions for you when we do these? Because we haven't had a chance to look at it. I'm, I'm hoping that you don't pass any of these today, because no one has had a chance to look at this and argue with you up here. Thank you.
Okay. That's all the speakers on open mic. Now, we range this to the miscellaneous business. And item number one is to discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Granbury Santa House to host, host a toy drive for Toys for Tots on December the 4th, 2024. And we have with us Mr. and Mrs. Claus here today in civilian clothes up here. Hello. Good morning, Arliss and Tom.
Good morning.
How are y'all doing?
Great. How are you all?
Good. Good. What do you got for us?
Well, we would like to host a toy drive on December 4th. In the past several years, people have been dropping toys off, thinking that we distribute them. So, we'd like to do that in conjunction with Toys for Tots and just make it an official day so that everybody can do it. FedEx, one of our Santas and, and board members, he works with FedEx and said that they would help sponsor and support us to do this.
Yeah.
So...
Well, it's, y'all do such a marvelous job. Tell us again, how many people came to visit the Santa House last Christmas?
6,475, I think.
Can you believe that? Right here at Granbury? That is just fabulous. Kids really look forward.
To date, we've seen roughly 35,000 people.
35 to date here?
To date, yes.
Up to date.
Up to date. So...
You know, and I was in the tent with, watching Osana with the kids. He has the patience of Job 2, doesn't he? I can see...
He's slow.
No. No. She's up there wringing her hands up here, and he just involved in the conversation with those kids. And they are mesmerized by Santa. Y'all are both working together. Do a fabulous job. Y'all really do.
Well, I do want to say that it's a large group of volunteers.
Yeah.
This is...
We really do.
The village does this.
Oh, no. We didn't.
Well, yourselves, there's so many people involved in this now that, that we're still, again, three fools thought it would be fun, and we're still in awe of the response.
Well, good.
So, that, I think that says a lot.
Well, it takes that leadership there. So, thank y'all for doing that. I mean, Christmas is not Christmas without Mr. and Mrs. Claus on this thing. So, good. So, do I hear a motion?
I move that we allow the Granbury Santa House to host a toy drive for Toys for Tots on December the 4th, 2024. Signed by all of the Commissioners' Courts, myself. There they go. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to provide $55,000 to Granbury Volunteer Fire Department Training Facility out of excess proceeds from tax sales. This training facility provides training for all nine volunteer fire departments in Hood County. And we have two speakers here today to speak. One is Mr. Richard Hoffs, right? Is that close enough today, Richard?
Close enough here.
Yeah, okay. So, you're the first speaker. And then we have Matt Hohann here from the Granbury, the chief himself of here. So, take it away, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. My name is Richard Haves. I'm speaking to you today not just as an individual, but as a member of the Board of Directors of the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. We are very fortunate in this county to have nine fine volunteer fire departments staffed by many brave men and women who dedicate their time to protect our citizens and to protect everybody who visits or lives in Hood County. And to keep everyone safe, they need to be trained. The training facility that Granbury has is unique amongst volunteer fire departments in that it has great training facilities, simulators, where firefighters can be trained in a safe environment. One of the things on the, the training ground is a burn house. That's what you're looking at today. The burn house has been there more than 10 years, and it's had several hundred fires, and the fires wear on it, and it needs some repairs. Well, Granbury owns the property. It's used by every fire department in the county. This Saturday is the first hands-on training for the Fall Hood Fire Academy. We call it the Hood County Fire Academy because it's open to all of the nine fire departments, and many of them will send, send their new members to be trained so they can be safe and know how to work together to keep everyone safe in our community. You know, we often misuse the word investment in our, in our, in our world, and, and it's something that should bring some return to us. And this training facility does indeed bring a return to the taxpayers of Hood County. We're currently going through a rating process for the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department for the ISO insurance rating, which is a determination for the insurance rates we pay on our homes and the businesses here in the county. And some of the factors that go into the rating are the training levels of the firefighters. The existence of the, of the training facility and the certifications that they hold are factors that go into that insurance rating. We are currently rated as a three, which is excellent for volunteer fire departments on a scale of one to 10. We are hopeful when the rating process is completed that we may see an improvement in that rating, which will lower the tax, or the insurance rates for the citizens here of Hood County. So, it does have a payback. I urge you to support this measure and appreciate your ongoing support of the fire departments here in Hood County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, Chief Matt Hohann.
Commissioners and judges, thank you for your time. Sorry, I am a touch behind the curve on getting you all the information as quick as I would have, should have gotten you. What I have is two bids right now, and I'm gonna just give you a real quick breakdown of the project and where we're at. Second page. So, the proposal is for repairs at our burn house. Just for an idea and for the court's perspective, there's a total of five burn houses that are in North Texas. There's three in the DFW area, Cleburne and us. So, just to kind of give you an idea of the uniqueness of the building, if you want to include Wichita and Abilene also for the entirety of North Central Texas. The repairs that need to be done to the building, it's a concrete and metal building, and what the building needs is something to help protect the now currently exposed sea perlene and metal that's holding the roof up. So, the repairs is to replace a roof and install an armored ceiling with some plate steel. And then also, the physical roof on the structure is getting old also, and we would like to be able to put people back on the roof of that building. The repairs include to provide a long-term fix. Now, what is long-term? At the end of the day, one of the problems that I have with this building and talking to contractors and getting bids, we light the building on fire. So, it's really hard to actually get someone to bid that, and me trying to explain to them, I realize you're not gonna be able to give me guarantees. But there's work that we know that we can do to armor the building and give it the longevity that it needs. Training facilities are exceedingly expensive to actually try and build, particularly today. And there's a little bit of work that we can do to it now to help armor the building and try and hold the heat down into the actual burn rooms and be able to allow that building to not only go, it's currently 10 years old. There's no reason it can't go to 20 or 30 or even longer. So, currently, right now, I have two bids. The first bid is a local contractor, but does work in the DFW area primarily. And the second bid is a local contractor, and he does work locally. And I have those, if I can hand them out now, or if you want me to hand them out here in a, in a minute. At the end of the day, we're, we've got one more contractor we're trying to get in. I've reached out now as far as Brady, and that's where this contractor's at to come in and give us a bid. I'm having a hard time getting the third bid, just so everyone knows that. I'm hoping that they'll be in by the end of the week so that I can get that third bid. At the end of the day, what has the county received from this? Our current fire academy has 50 students. Forty-two of them are from Hood County. If the students choose, they'll be fully certified through SFFMA 1 and 2. What does that certification matter? Well, let's talk about the real-world training and then also the practical certification for the organization and our benefit of using the ISO certifications. We're 100% certified across our department now. A lot of Hood County's other fire departments are in the same process of being able to certify their members. It is a bridge program for TCFP, Texas Commission of Fire Protection. We have a lot of young men and women that are coming to our program specifically because we can help them get their careers started in the metroplex. You would have access for year-round scheduling to the field. There is a little bit of limitation to that. So, if we have our countywide rookie school going on, we're not gonna let a department come in there and schedule the training field for that day. Also, typically, we've always have the schedule booked for the training field on Thursdays. We've never not had someone, if they wanted to, come in and also just jump right in with this if we were at the training field that day. That's never, we've never had the fingers crossed that way. Over the last 10 years, we've had hundreds of students trained. The program, when it truly started to roll out in 2013, that's when the training field was moved. Training facilities are exceedingly expensive to actually try and build, particularly today. And there's a little bit of work that we can do to it now to help armor the building and try and hold the heat down into the actual burn rooms and be able to allow that building to not only go, it's currently 10 years old, there's no reason it can't go to 20 or 30 or even longer. So currently, right now, I have two bids. The first bid is a local contractor but does work in the DFW area primarily. And the second bid is a local contractor, and he does work locally. And I have those, if I can hand them out now, or if you want me to hand them out here in a, in a minute. At the end of the day, we're, we've got one more contractor we're trying to get in. I've reached out now as far as Brady, and that's where this contractor's at to come in and give us a bid. I'm having a hard time getting the third bid, just so everyone knows that. I'm hoping that they'll be in by the end of the week so that I can get that third bid. At the end of the day, what has the county received from this? Our current fire academy has 50 students. Forty-two of them are from Hood County. If the students choose, they'll be fully certified through SFFMA 1 and 2. What does that certification matter? Well, let's talk about the real-world training and then also the practical certification for the organization and our benefit of using the ISO certifications. We're 100% certified across our department now. A lot of Hood County's other fire departments are in the same process of being able to certify their members. It is a bridge program for TCFP, Texas Commission of Fire Protection. We have a lot of young men and women that are coming to our program specifically because we can help them get their careers started in the metroplex. You would have access for year-round scheduling to the field. There is a little bit of limitation to that. So if we have our countywide rookie school going on, we're not going to let a department come in there and schedule the training field for that day. Also, typically, we've always have the schedule booked for the training field on Thursdays. We've never not had someone, if they wanted to, come in and also just jump right in with this if we were at the training field that day. That's never, we've never had the fingers crossed that way. Over the last 10 years, we've had hundreds of students trained. The program, when it truly started to roll out in 2013, that's when the training field was moved to that current location. By 2014 is when the countywide training started to kick off. By 2015 is when the program, I don't want to call it official, but it started to follow a curriculum provided by the state. Six, six years ago, the departments started to participate regularly and actively, particularly with the county rookie school. Four years ago, we've been able to follow a path for getting the certification established. Two years ago, every student that took the class certified. So, there's a progression here that just, it makes sense for the organizations. Why is certification's important? At the end of the day, it also boils down to your eligibility for grants and other funding. That's going to become a, a requirement. You're already starting to see it on grants. They're asking the question, how many people do you have certified? But it is coming. That you just, you won't be eligible if you don't have certification. The last part of this, just to understand from a cost perspective, let's say that another department didn't want to use this facility or, as it is now, currently closed down, that's just the burn house. You can still throw light hay loads in a barrel, throw smoke machines in there, drag hose through there. But we do have the building closed to burning right now because we don't want to extend any more damage to the building. But let's say you had someone that was just going somewhere else for the exact same training. TCC, $750 per student. Training division is $750 per student. So, just with the requested as proposed, and there is a bid cheaper of the $50,000, it wouldn't even cover 33 students of the 50 that are currently taking the class. And that's this, this semester. We typically run the academy twice a year. It does vary in size. This class is particularly very big. It is. Usually, the graduating numbers is around 10 to 25. So, that is the quick explanation there. Court, have any questions?
Now, I would, I would like to say that this, this is an immeasurable asset to the, you know, the number of firefighters that you're turning out to, to be safe, to be able to, to be knowledgeable of what they're doing there. And I'd like to pat you guys on the back a little bit with the region of the SFFMA that you guys are, you're showing the rest of the state some really great ways to do this. And as a matter of fact, they're taking notice and coming and, and looking at the program to see what they can do to make theirs, to try to match what you've got going on here.
Yes.
I think to have 50, 50 new guys running through that class, not only is that training incredibly important, but it also shows that our volunteer fire departments are growing. And that's a great thing also, so.
Right. One, one thing I'll add real quick is, we originally had, had work done at the training field. When the training field was moved there in 2013, city built the building, they built the projects. It was basically built on a hillside that was filled with coalige. If there was a raindrop within 1,000 miles of that site, you needed a 14-hour deep bath afterwards. And we had entered into an MOU with the county in, I think it was 2013 or 14, for paving and grading work up there at the training field. That MOU was very basic boilerplate, and it was just an MOU between the city, the county, and GVFD, and it was just for access to the training field. And, like I said, same very basic limitations. Things need to be scheduled. You had to have insurance, that type of stuff. But it was a very basic MOU. That, that MOU expired after seven years, and we've just been running status quo with it. Part of the reason is, we knew we'd eventually, there'd be, we'd need some more work done to the facility, and it's something where it is such a great benefit to the county. And there's, you, from my very biased perspective, if I was in the county, I would want guaranteed access to the facility and particularly the program.
Got it. You've gone way over, but I'm letting you go over twice as much because this is very important, but we've got it. Do I hear a motion?
Do you want the bids?
Yes. Can you bring the bids up?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do, Chief Hohann and I have had a few conversations about this, but we, we do need to make this motion contingent on completing the MOU with the city. And I think we can go ahead and do that and, and get that document done with the City of Granberry so that the money that the county is investing in this facility will ensure the access. So, do you have the bids?
Yep, I have two to three.
Okay.
Which one do you recommend? What are the, what are the amounts of the bid, and which one do you recommend?
I recommend the, the second one and the one that's the cheapest currently. And the reason is because.
It's a big difference.
This contractor actually went into the building and looked.
He physically looked at the structure. That's why there's such a big difference between the price. The very first bid is under the assumption of a lot of sandblasting and repairs of some of the structure. Because we do burn in this building, there's a lot of tar, tar and soot that's covering the metal. If you scrape the tar and soot off there, the metal's actually in good shape. So currently, the second bid, and, which is also the cheapest one, is the one I would recommend.
Well, and, and here's my question, but with the dollar figure, we've got to have a third bid on this, and, and you're getting that right now. So do we approve up to $25,000 contingent on the third bid? If it comes in at less, then how do we, how do we do that?
I can't.
Glenn, can we do this? Keep us within the law here. You're bailiwick.
Well, actually, this is the first I'm aware of this. I'm not 100% sure what laws that the fire department runs under versus what we do. I think it's probably a bit different. With the county, it's more of a, a matter of policy, up to 50,000. And over 50,000, that's where the bidding laws take effect.
So is this, I mean, this is similar to when we give grants to the other projects that we've given grants to. There's just a certain amount of money, but then the entity that has the grant is able to use that money for the purpose that the grant was, was given.
Yes, but they don't necessarily live under the same laws that we live under.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, with this being a granted type situation, and I can see that being a little.
Yeah, so really, it's a matter of policy. Up to 50,000, over 50,000, assuming they live under the same laws we do, then they would need to either go to a formal bidding or a cooperative.
Well, with a bid coming in under 50,000, I think that that would have.
It's under 50,000, so you make a motion.
So you're okay with the, you think you can get it done with 25,000?
That's what the contractor says.
Okay, well then.
And that's, that's why we definitely got that bid.
With that.
Something germane. We're about ready to move on. We good in it?
I do have draft copy of an agreement if you care to look at it, if it's purely draft.
Okay.
With that on.
If you, if you feel like that you can get it done for 25,000, it's under the 50,000, we're all right by doing this.
Yes.
On the deal, so I hear a motion.
So, make a motion that the Granberry Volunteer Fire Department receives a grant of $25,000 from excess tax sale proceeds, and then, and $25,000 contingent on completing the, in a local agreement with the City of Granberry for the use of the facility to repair the training facility for the Granberry Fire Department.
I'll second that.
It's a grant, we're going to grant $55,000 to the Granberry.
No, 25.
I mean, $25,000 to the Granberry Fire Department for the training facility out of the excess proceeds from the tax sales. And contingent upon getting the memorandum of understanding executed. Is that correct?
Yes.
And seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. It is a good deal. We got a tremendous fire department here, and that's a great deal. Thank you, Richard, for your comments here. Okay, item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granberry's event application approving the request for the use of the Historical Courthouse Parking Lot and Gazebo for the 18th Annual Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October the 12th, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. This, of course, we do have the event application, and I guess it is subject to the insurance, which we always require. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granberry's event application approving the request for use of the Historical Courthouse Parking Lot and Gazebo for the 18th Annual Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October the 12th, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 6, to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
It was made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granberry's event application for the Historical Courthouse Parking Lot and Gazebo for the 18th Annual Brazos River Corvette Club Charity Car Show on Saturday, October the 12th, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item, consider and take appropriate action toward RFB 2024-07 Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete to Reynolds Asphalt Construction as primary and Vulcan Construction Materials as alternate. Mr. Glenn Tillman, yes, sir?
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. The bidding for Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete opened on July 29th and closed August 29th at 10:00 a.m. There were two qualified responses, one equal two and one slightly less than the current contract. And so, Road Operations and Purchasing recommend awarding Reynolds Asphalt and Construction as the primary vendor and Vulcan Construction Materials as an alternate vendor.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
No. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to award RFB 2024-07 Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete to Reynolds Asphalt and Construction as the primary and Vulcan Construction Materials as the alternate.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to award RFB 2024-07 Hot Mix Asphalt Concrete to Reynolds Asphalt and Construction Company as primary and Vulcan Construction Materials as alternate, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to pay tax 21 annual membership dues in the amount of $10,000. This is something that I guess we need to go ahead and keep doing. This is very important since we're doing a widening that looks like it's finally going to happen here from Holmes Road to the other side of the bridge. And I think it's something that we need to do and keep on doing, so.
What budget is this coming out of?
I don't know, Fund 55?
Or Contract Services.
Contract, okay.
Yeah, General Attorney, Contract Services.
Contract Services, okay.
I guess where it's been in the past.
Yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the action to pay the tax 21 annual membership dues in the amount of $10,000 out of Contract Services.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve, to pay the tax 21 annual membership dues in the amount of $10,000 out of Contract Services, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to enter into an interlocal agreement for telecommunications towers with North Central Texas Emergency Communications District. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, North Central Texas Council of Governments 911 Division has determined that they needed to improve the system for 911, put a tower out towards the west side of the county, which they came up with a, a site, it's on, in the city limits, a toller up on the north side of the, this town. I thought I put the paperwork in there that, with the address in there, but anyway, 911 gave them an address, so that's all good to go. So, you know, this is going to hold some new microwaves to help loop the 911 system. So, they've determined they needed another tower out there to make it better, to link everything together with all the west side of the COG system. So, I'd ask for you to approve it, and the, they requested that we get insurance on the tower. I believe it was $126,000 a year.
About $162, right? Just 162.
And that's not going to be paid until next year, so. They have some good attorneys. I did send this to the county attorney, so should all be good to go.
Mr. Mills approved it, looked at it?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago. This process started, they sent it to me about a month ago, before they were really ready to have it on the court. So, yeah, everybody's looked through it, vetted it, so it's good to go.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve entering into an interlocal agreement for telecommunications towers with North Central Texas Emergency Communications District.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson to enter into the interlocal agreement for telecommunications towers with North Central Texas Emergency Communications District, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to approve promoting a transport officer, JLR 11, from $47,500 to transport corporal CRPL 1, $50,000 effective Monday, September the 9th. Yes, sir?
Judge Commissioners, we've never had a corporal over that division, but they stay so busy every day, and that's seven days a week, not just five days a week, doing transports all over the state of Texas and sometimes outside the state of Texas. So, the jail captain, he pretty much oversees all of that, but then there's times when, like right now, he's on a call with jail standards about some of our processes that we do, that we're doing better than anybody else in the state of Texas. Why, he's not here to ask for this, but he gets busy with things, so we'd like to have a corporal being over that division to help make sure everything's lined up, we don't miss anything, because with mental transports and, and inmates being processed and taken all over the state of Texas and back and forth to court, we wanted to get a corporal over, over that division.
And you already have the corporal position, so this is just putting somebody into that, that just kind of tweaking the duties a little bit to go to transport.
Correct, yes.
Okay, yeah. So I'll make the motion to approve promoting a transport officer, JLR 1-1475, to transport corporal, corporal 1, at $50,000 effective Monday, September 9th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve promoting a transport officer from 475 to transport corporal, to $50,000 effective Monday, September 9th, 2024, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. I guess there was a tie, so. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item, discuss and take appropriate action to approve promoting a county deputy clerk 1 for $36,600 to county clerk office manager to $40,000. County clerk Christine Leftwich, yes, ma'am?
So, I had an office manager. Unfortunately, I lost her to Parker County. But the individual that I'm wanting to promote has been working in the annex for two years and would routinely fill in when the office manager was out, so she's very familiar with the processes and duties that are in that office. And so I wanted to promote from within and give her an opportunity to step up to that position.
Good, good. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion to approve promoting county deputy clerk, clerk 1, from 366 to county clerk office manager at $40,000.
Second.
Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve promoting a county deputy clerk 1 from $36,600 to county clerk office manager to $40,000, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
I think the treasurer has a question.
Can we get an effective date, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Effective September 9th.
Okay. Number 10, discuss and take appropriate action regarding Texas Association of Counties' report from the insurance adjuster on the Act and Annex retaining wall. Take action, if necessary, to authorize the county judge to sign the initial project order IPO from Kimley Horn and Associates, either task 1 and 2 for $10,000 or task 1, 2, and 3 for $15,000.
Thank you, Judge. This is probably the third time we've had this on the agenda. We did have TAC come out and do a property appraisal or adjustment to see if it would be covered under our property insurance. Melissa, do you want to give an update on that?
Yes, they sent an adjuster, probably been about two weeks ago, and the adjuster's response more or less was, based on our observation, this is not a case of sudden and accidental damage and would be considered wear and tear.
So, that leaves us with either just leaving it as is. There was a comment in the adjuster's report about the drainage off of the building that's continuing to, I guess, exacerbate the problem, is compromising, I think that's the word I was looking for, compromising the issue. But the wall is on our property. It was built after the Dollar General, our family dollar, was put in. So, it's really up to us if we just want to continue to let it go or if we want to go ahead and find out how much it will cost to repair it. Is there any discussion?
Have you looked at it? What do you think? Yeah, what do y'all think? Y'all are the experts on that thing. Should we get it fixed or let it go? Leland, you have
If we let it go, there's kids that run up and down that wall that we're putting at risk. Right now, we have barricades, but they keep knocking the barricades down. But it's eventually going to go. I mean, the concrete, every time we have a rain, it's got more pressure on it, concrete's exploding, the wall exploding. If it wasn't for the drainage and the risk to that building, I'd say just knock it out and slope it back. But this is one of those deals where you want to cover your bases at every angle, because if that building falls, where you take that wall out, then we're liable.
What do you think, Leland?
I agree with Clint here. It's probably something I recommend we take action on. Like I said, worst case scenario, county would be the proud owner of our general, if that building falls.
Can you step up the line?
What do we need? Do we need to go with the 10 or the 15?
Well, the higher, the option two, which is 1, 2, and 3, that would allow Kimley Horn to be available for questions. Once, you know, they're going to do the design, but once, then the next step is we'd have to go out for bids and hire a contractor to do the work. And step three, or task three, is for them to be available for consultation during the actual construction, whoever the construction company is that's hired to do the improve or the correction. So, I would recommend 1, 2, and 3. Do you guys?
I'd agree with Commissioner on that one, because we don't know the what ifs as soon as we open that wall up. So, it'd be good to be covered.
Better have it, yeah. So, okay, the 1, 2, and 3 for $15,000 is what y'all recommend. Y'all agree with that? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve, you know, and take action regarding the Texas Association of Counties' report from the insurance adjuster on the Act and Annex retaining wall. Take action to authorize the county judge to sign the initial project order IPO with Kimberly Horn and Associates for task 1, 2, and 3 for a total of $15,000.
I'll second that. What, will this be out of contingency? Okay.
Would it not be Contract Services?
I may be able to do it out of my Contract Services, because my new budget's going to take over before I get any more engineering reviews in.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Do you know, I'll have to see, do I have the $15,000? If not, I might have to come back for adjustment for $1,000 or so. I'll have to look.
Okay, well, out of Development Contract Services account.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign the initial project order from Kimberly Horn and Associates for task 1, 2, and 3 for $15,000, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Funds to come out of Contract Services?
Development, Contract Services.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, discuss and consider approving revisions to the manager travel and reimbursement policy, Ms. Melissa Welber.
Yes, round two.
Honing in on it.
We feel like we're getting close to being finished with it.
Yeah.
We've met numerous times over this policy. Some things have come up since the last policy was approved, and so we did some revising, which is highlighted in yellow, or you'll see it in red, and now it's just back up for court approval.
Set aside with it now?
I believe so. The auditor definitely plays a huge part in this policy, because she manages the travel. Once they're turned in, so we've definitely seeked her opinion on a lot of it.
And right out of the gate, the out-of-state travel hit us twice. I mean, within two weeks. So, you know, we just kind of eliminated the differentiation between out-of-state and in-state. And then the lodging, we were having some folks having to stay in some pretty unfriendly confines and come to find out that most of these agencies actually allow 150% of the GSA maximum for lodging rates. So, we put that in there and kind of the changes there highlighted.
Those things are, if you want to, well, those are on a different page. But this part that's being shown here is new, and I had a question about that, is why the 10 days and why the denial. You know, I'm just thinking about people who might be going to class next week. So, they go to class next week, the end of September, but they don't file their, you know, they have 10 days and they end up filing it October 1st. So, I just think the 10 days is pretty restrictive. I would like to see that, say, 30 days.
Actually, yeah, the, I wouldn't have any big, big issue with that. And that was, well, I mean, and the 10 days, actually, you could turn it in after the 10 days. It doesn't say, it denies it. It just says it goes on the consent agenda at that point. So, if anybody wanted to pull it off and look at it. So, we could kind of, we had some back and forth on that a little bit and.
I really don't see what, I mean, the person who's being affected here is the person who was out the money at the beginning. The work is the same for the auditor's office to process it, whether they get it within 10 days or within 30 days. I think if you just said it has to be done within 30 days, if you go to class the very end of September, we do have expenses that roll over that during October, we're paying for things in the prior fiscal year anyway. I just think if you just said 30 days, it would take care of both of those issues.
I agree. Let's do that. Do I hear a motion?
So, we're changing the 10 to 30?
Yeah, approve it, the travel, manager travel reimbursement policy, except for extending the 10 days to 30 days. Is that the motion?
Well, and not deny it after whatever.
Yeah, any reimbursement request out of the fiscal year. So, just within that 30 days of travel.
Are we striking that sentence?
Strike that line and change the days to 30. Is that, is that good with you guys? Do y'all have any comments on that or?
Is that all right with you?
I think so. We're taking it from 5 to 30. So, that's quite a big change.
Does it make any difference for you, though?
I mean, the year-end stuff, it's a little bit pesky. So, if somebody travels on September 30th, doesn't turn in their travel till October 30th, that makes it difficult to go back to that little budget, because it's so far out. So, that wouldn't be the ideal scenario, but it's whatever the court wants to do.
Is that the only time period that it raises a problem? Ms. Matlock, is that the only time it would?
I'm not supposed to touch a card.
What about credit card payments?
Oh, yeah, credit card payments, that's a pretty big issue. So, if you, the new policy says you're supposed to use the county credit card to book as much as you can your hotel stay, your admission, or whatever the training is. And so, if you're booking that ahead of time on the credit card, then you're not turning your traveling till probably two cycles after that credit card payment. It's conflicting. So, we're going to have to approve that payment to the credit card, but not have the backup to approve it. So, that makes it a different plan.
Okay.
What are you saying? Do you recommend leaving it at 10?
I would like it to be less, but I don't, I mean, we're going to have to approach the credit card purpose.
Before, anyway.
Well, I think if we know what time the train leaves, we can do it. You just know that you got the 10 days to go ahead and do it.
Okay, we'll just leave it the way it is.
Leave it at 10 and just strike out that one line that says any reimbursement request out of the fiscal year will be denied. It's just within the 10 days that that.
Okay, all right.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the manager and travel reimbursement policy with that one alteration.
Second.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the revisions to the manager and travel reimbursement policy, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one more question, Ms. Treasurer. It says that we'll be reimbursed through payroll. Is that going to be a line item or is that going to be subject to income tax?
There are certain ones, meal reimbursements that are in county that are subject to tax, but they out of county overnight are not, mileage are not, per the IRS. Yeah. That's not something we decide. And it still comes out of your budget line or your travel budget line.
Yeah.
It's a separate code that was set up to not be.
Taxable, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you understand the question. If I pay five, go somewhere and pay $500 to cash out for the room after three days, let's say, and then turn that in and then get charged income tax on that.
Yeah.
That would be not very.
The only, the only difference is, is you're in county. So, if you travel to Tarrant County for the day and you take lunch, you get back, it is taxable, because it's not overnight.
Per the IRS. Yeah, so meals without overnight stay are considered additional income, whereas meals and overnight stays are not considered additional income, per the IRS. I can see that.
Who sits around and thinks that up?
Those 80,000 new IRS agents.
Yeah, anyway, I'm sorry. That was my only question.
And you can tell that in your net, whenever you're looking at your net versus your past net.
Okay, did everybody hear the motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 11, receive update on the solution return funds to Hood County from Tyler Technology for discontinuing the implementation of execute time, overpayments, and other credit. Take action, if necessary, to receive funds into the fiscal account recommended by the county auditor.
Thank you.
Status.
Yes, so I've reached out to Tyler the last couple of days, well, last week before the agenda deadline, and then yesterday before court today. Ryan, Matt, can I have not heard back? I don't know if Stephanie has or Owen, have you? So, looks like we're going to have to schedule another conference call to see where they are on getting their, I think, the last conference call we had, they had to escalate it to their higher level executives because of the amount of money that was needing to be credited to our account. So, I will schedule another conference call unless Stephanie's heard anything. Have you? Okay.
You want to just table it till October, just till September 24th?
Yes, I'll table Agenda Item 11 until September 24th.
Don't need a motion on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Number 12, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the following interlocal agreements of Hood County Animal Control. Sheriff Deeds, we got the same thing as we do every year for the.
Hey, you're up, Kevin.
I'm done.
Kevin?
I'm out on it this year.
Yeah, please. We've heard it six years in a row. I can't do it. I can't hear it anymore. These are standard, aren't they, that we do every year?
Yes, it is. Judge, Commissioners, this is standard. Renew them every year. In your packet, you should have got the worksheets that Kelly was going off of. And so, the amounts vary by the usage of what they've had in the last year. So, it's about as fair as it can get. So, if you hadn't looked at that, I guess I can go through those, but.
We don't need to go through that. We've seen them enough, okay? We got to have it. Do I hear a motion? I think it'd be appropriate for you to make a motion.
Yeah, it'd be really appropriate, Kevin, if you make that motion.
Going to make the motion, Jack?
He's not going to do it, is he?
I'm not going to do it.
I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreements for the City of Granbury, City of Crescent, City of Stockton Bend, City of Lipan, the City of Decordova, and the City of Toler. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sheriff, five zero. All right. Here we go. Okay, item number 13, consider the proposed increase in tax revenues of the proposed budget of 11.17%, an increase in the revenue of $2,837,115, and take a record vote regarding that issue per Local Government Code, Section 111-008C.
Judge, I really think that this is out of order, that 16 should come first, because we haven't, I don't know how you can approve a budget without approving the salary matrix. And actually, I agree with Ms. Brown that we have a lot of additional work to do on this. So, I recommend that we table 13, 14, 15 until we complete 16.
I think we've got a lot of work to do on all of it. I say we could just go ahead and table all four of them for today, because that's.
Okay, I just want to remind the court and everybody here that in talking with the auditor and the treasurer here today, that we really do need this prior to September 30th, because we got workers' comp that must be turned in, that has every county employee's salary for purposes of workman's comp. And you're going to need that information. Of course, we got the next, we have a workshop scheduled for you then Monday.
Monday.
So, Monday, we can probably come to do that. So.
This workshop or special call meeting?
No, it's a special call meeting. We can actually do, take action. Yeah, we can actually do a special call meeting.
I did, I did reach out to Risk Management TAC because of our treasurer's concern. I anticipate we won't go to the 30th, but, you know, that is the state statute that every county has up to the 30th. So, I was wondering how they have handled this in the past. And she went, she was going to check some more, but. to check some more, but her initial reaction was is that the report is an estimate and that it could be, you could file it today with an estimate using today's salaries, and then once the work comp is actually this, this is to set your rates. So once the work comp rates are ready to be set, they would then take your actuals. So that alleviated that concern for me. But, you know, that's an outside chance, but I just wanted to follow up on our treasurer's concern on that issue. So you've made a motion to table 13, 14, 15, and 16?
Yes.
I second.
I got another comment, Judge, when you get.
Okay, well, does that answer your question, or do you still want to speak on this, Ms. Brown? What did she say?
Tabling.
Okay, table, it's a good idea. Okay.
The only observation with this is, and I'm looking at Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 111 on county budgets, but it seems to me like that the tax rate ought to be the first one in order on this because the budget's contingent on the tax rate, and we may or may not approve the tax rate as stated. So my suggestion is when we come back, that we put the tax rate as first item.
Because otherwise, why even bother with the budget? We're not going, we don't know how much we're going to have to work with.
And again, I'm just going by Texas Local Government Code 111. It's in there, so.
Now, that doesn't have anything to do with tabling it, so we can still go ahead and table. But all those in favor of tabling 13, 14, 15, and 16 until the special call meeting on Monday, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously on the tabling, and I too agree that we should set the property tax rate, so maybe that's what the order, what we should do. Okay.
I've got one more comment, Judge, if you don't mind, with your indulgence.
Okay.
I'm curious about this under meetings on the Commissioners Court. Under 81, Section 81006 regarding a quorum, to talk about setting a tax rate, it says a regularly scheduled meeting. So I'm wondering if we can do that in a special, if we're going to put the tax rate back on the agenda, whether we can do that. So that's a question for the county attorney.
Hold down.
Yeah, we still have the 24th court if we can't do it on.
Did anybody call you ahead of time and let you look at this, or are you going to appear on the fly in 15 seconds?
When you see the question for the county attorney, does that mean like right this second or at some point?
Well, my thinking was before the next meeting.
Right, that's fine. I mean, I'll go look at it and try to get an opinion before you take action Monday, hopefully, but I haven't looked at it before just now, so.
Okay.
I don't know how to jump in.
Good. Okay. All right. Now, sir, you're up, your number 17, discuss and take appropriate action to determine the method of payroll deduction for AirMedCare membership.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, I appreciate the time. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead, I just figured I'd save us a few seconds there. So this is the second invitation we've received to come before you in follow-up on the initial presentation two weeks ago. We presented the elected or selected optional payroll deduction for your county employees. After a meeting with Melissa two weeks ago, we discovered that there were a few things that maybe needed to be reconsidered as far as the deductions. And so instead of, because of the payment that needs to be done so that the memberships can become active, it can normally be three payments that need to be done consecutively in three months. So because of that, it was decided that we needed to find a different way that we can make the payments, and you folks, you know, make the deductions to your employees. So what I'm going to share with you today is an adjustment, an optional adjustment that could solve that problem.
I think we are under the understanding that this was really a pass-through, that you would, the employees would have the option to take this service and pay for it over the 26 paychecks, as was shown in the brochure. So when we discovered that that was not the situation, I think that's when Melissa brought it back. May I have a copy as well?
Motion.
Right, so when we submitted our initial, initial paperwork, it was described in one of those documents that it states right at the bottom, right, that the funding of the payroll deduction would need to be done in three consecutive months to pay us. So when it was selected, we figured, okay, well, they've made that choice, they, you know, that information was considered. So that's why when we came in two weeks ago, we made that presentation under that assumption. But once we met with Melissa, then we've started going through the finer details, then that was discovered. But what you're going to see here in the spreadsheet is an adjustment. Instead of 26 deductions, these could be done in six deductions, okay, over the course of three months. And what that will do is that it will allow you to make, for example, month number one, deduction, deduction, and then a payment to us. Once that first payment is received, then the memberships become active. So what this will allow is for you to have no out-of-pocket expense. You will be able to collect the funds ahead of time in two deductions per month, and at the end of that month, make a payment to us, and that should be done and paid for within three months. Now, based on, of course, the selections that they make, as you may remember, they do have the option to select not only from the emergent membership, but also the non-emergent, which was the fly-you-home, the service that flies you back if in case you're ill and want to come back home to recuperate, that would also be in there. So whatever amount of money they, or selections they make, then every 15 days, they would be deducted from their paycheck, and at the end of that month, you may be able to make the payment.
I have a question. So part of this is because they're county employees, they're getting a discount. Couldn't you do that just by them showing their county ID, and they just come to you and say, hey, I work for the county, I'd like to sign up, and you give them the discount rate, and just leave the whole county payroll confusion and complexity out of it?
Right. So this plan is under a business plan, not necessarily because they're county employees. So we're presenting this as a business setup, if you will, so that they can get the discounts that normally are given to businesses like yourselves. You know, we look at the county as a business. And last time when we did the presentation, you know, we asked for questions, and I think you asked some very good ones. Did you get the information that you requested via email about the structure of our company and management? I sent you an email and left your voicemail, but I'd never heard from you, so I just want to make sure.
I didn't get a voicemail, but that could be because of our, during that period of time, our phones weren't quite working.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I did receive the email.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure you received it. But are there any more questions or anything I can elaborate on with regards to this? I think this is a perfect solution. Again, it would allow to mitigate whatever out-of-pocket expenses you may have. The employees would have immediate access to the memberships once we receive first payment, and it's still very, very, you know, affordable. If you look at, for example, the option of just the emergent piece, it's $9.17 that would be drafted, you know, six times over the course of three months. And if they wanted to take the fly-you-home domestic, for example, we use that just as an example for you to consider, it would be $32.50 in basically six deductions. So it's still very affordable. I'm pretty sure they're going to appreciate the support that you're providing in having them get access to these types of discounts.
I think you should go back and ask your management, can't you give this, we're not a business, we're a government entity.
Right.
We're not a for-profit business, so I think you should ask, can you not do, the same way the YMCA does, if you're a county employee, you get a discount. So can you provide the same discount to any county employee who desires to have this insurance and offer them the discount? And if they choose to do it, they choose to do it, and we're not putting our treasurer and our payroll department having to do somersaults and hoops to get this benefit to our employees.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Samuelson. For one, it's not insurance. I think, you know, ever since we've been here, we've made sure that it's known that it's a membership.
Service.
Right, it's a, exactly, it's a service. And if we were to do this for Hood County, we would have to do it for every county in the country, you know, and that would just, that would be very, very, you know, challenging to do. So I will be more than happy to ask that question, but based on our experience, I mean, this is what's offered across the country for all counties and for all cities. City of Granbury is also considering this as well, so it would be, you know, a very challenging thing to do. It would pretty much indicate revamping everything from an organizational standpoint.
And the issue that we're running into here is it basically ends up being that we're fronting payroll for the county by paying it, paying it now and then taking the payroll deduction for the 24 pay periods. That's where the glitch came in, and don't really know if that, if that's within the laws to do so. And then the, of course, the six payments ends up being a little bit of a burden because now we've got to come in and remember to turn those off, we have new employees coming in, and, you know, to make sure that that's all. Is that a pain? I mean, is that kind of?
I feel like too, if we're fronting the money for an employee who's going to pay six payments back, what happens if they term? The county is still liable for that payment unless you refund that money.
Yeah, I think they, I think they do, and I don't know, I mean, it would be six payroll deductions total, and then it's finished. And then, yeah, if they termed at some point in there, then. Right.
We don't, so as soon as, as soon as we make the first payment.
Based on the employee deductions.
Okay. So we would just have to figure out timing on the payroll, and is it not an option to do one-time payment for the employee?
And I think that that's probably the, where we need to be. Let's just offer this as a one-time payment.
When you're going in and out of payroll, it's very easy to miss something or, you know, forget to turn it off, or, you know, continue to take it out, or it just becomes, there's a lot of moving parts in it.
Right.
It seems simple to say, well, six payments and we're done, but then who reminds us, you know, where's that flow? We won't have that flow.
Right.
What was your suggestion, Commissioner?
Oh, I think that, you know, I think that, yeah, we can still offer the thing, let's do it as a one-time payment, sign up, pay for it, that can be a, you know, deduction one time. And we can sit and work on this and talk about it or chew on it and see if there's something else that we could do for next year and make it a little bit more.
And again, I think whether you do a one, a one-deduction payment, that's fine. I was always telling Melissa, the focus or the objective was to make it as painless as possible for the employee, right? You know, so being to have, whether it be the 26 deductions or the six deductions, it's pretty much the same concept, and I do understand that, you know, it's more labor-intensive, right, to be able to determine when to turn off and when to turn back on. But if the court feels, if the county feels that, you know, just offering the employees the membership with just one single deduction, that's fine with us. We'll work with whatever works for everyone. The only thing that I mentioned to Melissa was that because our focus was to make it as affordable and as painless as possible, then most likely, they will just limit their selections, right? And that's something that maybe once they try the, or once they experience what this could really provide for them, you know, in the future, they'll be able to see the value of it, and maybe by then, the county may have a different perspective, you know, I don't know, increase in deductions, or maybe making it a census plan, right, where you're keeping the pool of memberships at your disposal. So there's multiple ways, but whatever the court decides, we will gladly support.
Okay. Well, yeah, let's have that conversation for sure about next year and see if we can make that a little easier. But with that said, I'll make a motion that we still allow a one-time payroll deduction if someone chooses to go with the AirMedCare plan.
Very good.
Allow a one-time payroll deduction? Is it an annual?
It would be for the year, yes.
Yeah, for the year.
For the household.
So do I understand it's like on that first one up here for the combination, so it's six times 32.50, taking that top one for a one-year deal.
Correct.
So it'd be, you know, $186 or whatever, right?
Correct.
For the one year.
That would be for the company, yes.
But if you took the three-year option, again, it's six times $34.17, right?
That's correct.
And then if you want it for 10 years, it would be six times 109. And it'd be a $600 deduction, but then you'd have it for a 10-year.
Correct.
That includes the, F U H is the fly-you-home, where if you're somewhere out of the country and.
They bring you back.
And you get sick and you're in a hospital in Mexico or something, and you want to come back to the United States, you would use that fly-you-home.
Right, but that is again the domestic, right? So that would be within the US.
Just, so if you're in Washington DC and you're in the hospital.
And you want to be brought, fly-by-home, yes, that would, that would be it.
For the helicopter service, not the fly-you-home, it's six times 917.
Right, so that would be if you're 55, if you're 60 or above, then it would be a $45 a yearly membership, which is the one on the bottom. And if you're 59 years or younger, then it would be $55 a year, which is the one right up on top. So the objective was, you know, make it as affordable as possible. To be quite honest, you know, inflation is something that we have very little control over. So the objective is to extend the memberships to the employees in a way that they can secure the pricing, they can avoid having to be exposed to, you know, the future, having to pay more for something they could make an investment on through their payroll deduction, make it affordable, and they keep that membership for, you know, whatever, 10, five years. And that's, that was the intention behind the six deduction idea is to make that available financially, you know, accessible to them. You know, it's $32.50, up to $110, basically. It's still pretty affordable, I mean, based on your circumstances, of course.
So you made the motion for the one-time payroll deduction, and I'll second that.
Andrews to allow a one-time payroll deduction for the AirMedCare membership. Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for your time, I sure do appreciate it.
Thank you all. All right. Okay. Number 18, discuss and take appropriate action to approve a resolution regarding the Public Safety Office Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant application. This resolution is acknowledging the application of a public safety office grant and commits to the required terms. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, we, they put in for this a while back, finally got word that it was funded 100%, but their 100% was cut by two-thirds. But anyway, it's better than nothing. So the bullet-resistant shield grants, it's $75,845.63, so that would purchase nine of those shields, so that's a great deal, because that's nine more than we got now. So that's a fantastic deal. This was no match, no matching required with these grants, so it's just 100% of that $75,000 paid from this grant. And as soon as the resolutions are signed and sent in, then they'll release the money. And so there's a resolution for both of these grants, for number 18 and 19.
We've already signed all the paperwork on it. They won't even have the grants? They've granted them, haven't they?
They granted them, but they won't release the funds until the resolution is done.
Oh, okay.
So you should have in your packet the two resolutions, one for 18 and one for 19.
So Emily applied for these in February, correct?
Yes.
It just took from February until now for them to notify us that. And it just took from February until now for them to notify us that the grant was granted, but now we have to, they want this resolution.
Correct. That's the way I understand it. And, yeah, we've been wearing her out with, have you heard anything? Have you heard anything? Well, we finally did, so. So, the first one is, the number 18 is for the bullet-resistant shields, and so we'll be able to buy nine of them. And then we do have the option to put in for it for next, I guess, next year and the year after that, so hopefully we can get the entire that we originally put in for.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so both of them are the same things. Let's take 18 first, is that, do I hear a motion for us to go ahead and sign the resolution for the bullet shield?
Make the motion to approve the resolution regarding Public Safety Office Bullet-Resistant Shield Grant application. This resolution is acknowledging the application of a public safety grant and commits to the required terms.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to approve the resolution for the bullet shield-resistant grant, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Okay, all those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And then do I hear a motion for 19 regarding the body armor application?
Yeah, Judge Commissioners, this is for rifle-resistant body armor. We had started working on this through the ARPA money. So, this total that we've received or will be receiving is $16,892.50. And so, we'll have to get an updated quote on the cost of those. So, for sure, get seven more of those vests, maybe even eight, just depending on how the, hopefully, they didn't go up on cost. But for those, those body-resistant, rifle-resistant body armor, same thing, we need to approve the resolution to go to them.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the Public Safety Office Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant application, acknowledging the application of a public safety grant, or safety office grant, and commits to the required terms.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the resolution regarding the Public Safety Office Rifle-Resistant Body Armor Grant application, acknowledging the application of a public safety office grant, and commit to the required terms, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson this time. Yep, tie goes, we'll alternate the ties. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, all those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously on both of those sheriffs.
Thank you.
So, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Does any commission wish to pull anything or discuss anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as presented.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. All right, this brings us to business concerning the roads, and we have Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny.
Good morning, Judge Masagel, Commissioners.
Okay, I guess the first thing we need to adjourn into a public hearing, don't we?
Yes, sir.
So, at 24 minutes till 11, we're going to adjourn into a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of the following traffic regulations and take appropriate action. What do you have, Mr. Lenny?
The Homeowners Association of Comanche Cove had contacted Hood County concerning this intersection and asked if, what would be the required steps to make this intersection more, more of a safe intersection? And it's upon the recommendation of Road Ops that we, that we place two stop signs, and this would be on Sabine River at its intersection with Pecos River Drive. And the reason for doing it this way, Pecos is the, the longer of the drives, where Sabine is more or less a cross street that goes from one, one side to the other. But we do recommend to the court that we do place these two stop signs.
Okay. Does the public here want to make any statement about this, since we're in a public hearing? If not, at 22 minutes till 11, we're going to adjourn back into Commissioners Court. And do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to establish two stop signs at Sabine River Drive and Pecos River Drive.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to establish two stop signs on Sabine River Drive and Pecos River Drive, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Lenny. And now we've got development. Mr. Clint Head, discuss and consider approving the correction plat of Pirate Village to be recorded. What do you got, sir?
This final plat was approved by the Commissioners Court, August 8, 2023, and there was a scribbler's area on the building setback since they had restricted the properties to patio homes. The development regulations allow patio home developments to be reduced to 15-foot building setbacks along the interior road. And they'd left the restriction off, and it mandatory went to 25 feet, but it's all fixed now, it's all the same owner. They're just going to be ready to sell and develop.
That explanation, does I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the correction plat of Pirate Village to be recorded, as shown.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, and a motion from Commissioner Wilson to approve the correction plat of Pirate Village, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, Mr. Head.
Court needs to consider accepting the letter of credit for maintenance of the street and right-of-way at Sunset Ridge in Precinct 4. This final plat was approved at the May 14 Commissioners Court. The roads have been constructed and looked at, and then this begins the two-year maintenance by the developer as of today, once the agreement's signed, or the letter of credit's accepted.
You're in favor of that?
Yeah, I mean, they're meeting the rules, so.
It's according to the rule, okay. Any further comment or discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to accept the letter of credit for maintenance of the street and right-of-way at Sunset Ridge in Precinct 4, and the letter of credit is for the account of T. Core Investments LLC with, and it is issued with Plains Capital Bank out of Weatherford.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Will, Eagle, to accept the letter of credit for the maintenance of the street and right-of-way at Sunset Ridge in Precinct 4 at Plains Capital Bank, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. That brings us now to the illustrious county auditor, Ms. Stephanie Matlock. Do you have one of us to pay the bills?
Good morning.
How are you?
Yes, okay. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all of the outstanding invoices in the amount of $981,660.2, and recommends payment.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we authorize the payment of, for the period of August 21, 2024 through September 3, 2024, in the amount of $981,660.2.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the invoices for the period of August 21, 2024 through September 3 of 2024, in the amount of $981,660.2, seconded by.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and that, ladies and gentlemen, is a wrap.